Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman. Here. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection.
Here.
Mayor Moore. I'm sorry. We're now standing for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is for Juneteenth.
Good evening, everyone. Whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas two and a half years later, on June 19th, 1865, a group of enslaved African-Americans in Galveston, Texas finally learned that they were free from the institution of slavery. And Juneteenth, a portmanteau of June and 19th commemorates the day that Major General Gordon Granger arrived to announce the end of the Civil War and slavery. And whereas his announcement, General Order Number Three, declared that all slaves are free, asserted the involvement of an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property by severing the economic, physical, and emotional chains that persons of African lineage had endured for more than 200 years. And whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation, Juneteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas the city of Asbury Park, the Asbury Park Democratic Club, Springwood Avenue Rising, Second Baptist Church, and the Juneteenth Planning Committee join the rest of the country in celebrating this suspicious occasion, acknowledge the injustice imposed upon people of color by slavery and systematic racism, and endeavor to be a driving force for positive change in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor John Moore and the Asbury Park City Council do hereby recognize June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth Day and encourage all residents to join in celebrating the 156th anniversary of one of our country's earliest liberations movements, Juneteenth. And this is signed by the mayor and the council. Thank you.
Want me to take a picture on you? Want me to take a picture?
Whereas the Mercy Center was founded by the Sisters of Mercy, whose primary mission is to provide emergency support and assistance for the economically disadvantaged. And whereas the Mercy Center's mission is to provide comprehensive services that empower, enrich, and educate people facing socioeconomic challenges to realize their full potential. And whereas it is their mission to make the community an empowered place marked with dignity and respect by offering comprehensive services that support the emotional, physical, and financial welcoming of the individuals they serve by encouraging them to think differently about themselves and the world around them. And whereas the 1997 Mercy Center's outreach efforts expanded with the founding of the Sisters Academy, the junior high school that offers families in the greater Asbury Park area a well-rounded education of excellence and holds a 100% high school graduation rate for all of its alumni. And whereas the Mercy Center is an integral part of our community, whose commitment to helping children, families, and individuals overcome burdens and obstacles with dignity and justice by offering programs and services to help children and families and individuals lead a better life. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council acknowledge the contributions of the Mercy Center and Sisters Academy to our community under the dedicated leadership of Sister Carol Ann Henry and Sister Mary Lou Nelson, respectively, and wish them well. Be it furthermore resolved that the mayor and city council hereby declare July 14th, 2021, to be Mercy Center Day and encourage residents to celebrate the pride and charity. I have to say that I'm into the Sisters Academy and the program that they've done with the girl hair. It's amazing, as is the Mercy Center and all that you do to the community. So, thank you and in safety.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Mercy Center graciously accepts this proclamation. We're very excited to venture into our next phase of leadership. Our founders, Sister Carol and Sister Mary Lou, are retiring in the next few months, and we will soon be announcing more about that specifically. But we wanted to take a day, at least one day, out of their many, many years of service and dedication to Asbury to formally acknowledge and celebrate Mercy Center Day. So, please follow us on Instagram, on Facebook. Hopefully we'll get some press. And we invite everyone from the day of July 14th to come to Mercy Center and to enjoy the formal celebration as well. So, thank you for all your support, and we really appreciate everything that you do for Mercy Center. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there anybody here for the third one?
This is for the North Shore chapter of the Continental Society's 50th anniversary. Do you want to take it?
Whereas Dr. Rose Cooper Thomas arrived in Monmouth County in the 1960s and found the remnants of racial discord caused a lack of wholesome outlets and recreational activities for black youth. And whereas she was motivated by her compassion and deep commitment to serve disadvantaged children and youth, to seek a means to provide such services for the black youth in the area. And whereas her familiarity with the Continental Societies, Inc., LLC, now an international organization, and their commitment to helping children and youth caused Dr. Cooper Thomas to collaborate with 15 women of various educational and vocational backgrounds to establish the North Jersey Shore chapter of Continental Societies Incorporated. And whereas on May 22nd, 1971, the North Jersey Shore chapter was installed with the following members: Marie Carter Stone, Marion Cooper, Ruth Dellum, Esther Esters, Lorraine Finley, Corinne Godwin, Galisa Holman, Holman, excuse me, Kanta Johnson, Blanche Jones, Ada Pettit, Janice Sweeney, Mary Tate, Dr. Rose Cooper Thomas, Elizabeth E. Williams, Shirley S. Williams. And whereas the North Jersey Shore chapter has always been known for being among the first in all that they do, including charter member Elizabeth E. Williams being the first charter member to be elected to serve as a national historian and to be inducted into the Continental Society's Hall of Fame. Janice Moon was the first chapter member appointed as the Eastern Region Vice Regional Director. She was followed by E. Tanya Greenwood, who was subsequently elected as the Eastern Regional Director, and became in 2010 the first chapter member to receive the highest national award given to a Continental, the Lilian Parks Thomas Distinguished Service Award. And whereas the North Jersey Shore chapter of Continental Societies, Inc. has supported and sponsored various initiatives and provided humanitarian services to youth in the greater Asbury Park area and Monmouth County, such as scholarships, literacy programs, school supply giveaways, career fairs, and workshops, the Colgate Bright Smiles Oral Health Program, and First Lady Michelle Obama's Childhood Obesity Prevention Program, to ensure the effective outcomes for our youth in the areas of health, education, employment, recreation, and the arts and humanities. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council acknowledge the North Jersey Shore chapter of Continental Societies, Inc., dedication and commitment to impact the lives of local youth for the better, the many strides, and the first of its chapter members, and hereby honor the legacy of their founding member, Dr. Rose Cooper Thomas, on this, its 50th anniversary. Congratulations to the Continentals.
We're now on to special events.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is from the Monmouth Ocean Asbury Park pal. They would like to do an recruitment event on June 12th in Springwood Park. The next two applications are from the Asbury Park Music Foundation for music on Cookman through September 5th and music in Springwood Park through August 23rd. Rescue Ridge would like to hold a citywide yard sale to benefit local animal rescue centers on July 10th. And the Asbury Park Fishing Club is requesting a city date for its annual fishing show held at Convention Hall. Asbury Park AYS Football would like to use Springwood Park for their banquet on, this is actually this Saturday, the date is incorrect in the application, but this Saturday they would like to use Springwood Park. I'm sorry?
Is it, what did you say? Police athletic or they?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, Sunday, the 13th. Yeah, sorry about that. And there is one wedding on August 23rd on Fifth Avenue Beach. And last but not least, there is the post memorial ceremony to be held or event held on, I'm sorry, help me out, Amy. I don't have the application in front of me. I believe it's the 13th?
Yes.
Yeah, June 13th. Are there any questions on any of the applications?
So, the other wedding on 9/12 is canceled?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I don't believe we have any items to be presented, none that I'm aware of.
Correct.
Okay. Matters from City Council?
No, but I just want to say welcome back. You know, the last year's been a challenge for all of us, and we wouldn't have gotten through it, and we wouldn't be here tonight without the support of the staff, Asbury Park City manager and staff, and our residents, and our business community. So, thanks to all of you for your support and for being here tonight.
Just a couple of announcements that, one, Asbury Park Summer Day Camp for children is from ages five to 12, and it begins on July 6th through August 13th. And if you need any, have you any questions, you can contact Leisha Freud or any member of our staff. And second, the city has a grant for small businesses of $2,500, and these are small businesses that have been affected by the pandemic. So, please, if you are a small business, apply. The money is here, and we want to support our businesses. And that's it. Thank you.
My family and I would like to send our donors out to the Neal family, the Ellis Neal family. They've been in this town for at least over 40 years, and they've worked hard with the kids and the school system, and we'd just like to send our donors out to them. Thank you.
Mine is also a condolence to Ken Roth's family from the entire council. He was a really important person in Asbury Park and a guy who really cared about transportation. So, we just wanted to give a heartfelt sorry to him and his family.
And it's a shame, but I have to follow up. Last evening, Lawson June, a former councilperson, deputy mayor, and one of the leaders of Citizens on Patrol passed away. Lawson was one of the nicest people you would ever meet in your life. Our condolences go out to his wife, June, not his wife, Ann, I'm sorry, and their children and the entire family. Again, just a wonderful person. And so, I'll go from that to something. Within the past 12, 13 months, I've been making a lot of side bets with everybody, so I won my bet tonight. So, anybody that's going to pay me, please don't pay me the money, just make a check out to the Police Athletic League. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager.
Nothing else, thank you.
Matters from the city attorney.
And nothing at this time, Emily, thank you.
We're now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker? Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public. Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Hi, Pam Lamerton, Sunset Avenue. I was wondering if you could give us an update on the Bradley Cove Project?
Is that your only question?
My only question.
Yes, Donna, you want to go ahead?
Update regarding?
Update regarding what exactly, Pam? When you say Bradley Cove Project, what do you mean by?
What's the status of the appraisal, and do we still have that million dollars?
So, okay, so the appraisal has been submitted to iStar for their review, and the million dollars that Green Acres has afforded to the city is still available for acquisition of any property in the city, including that area.
And does the city get an appraisal from iStar?
No, the city prepared their own appraisal back, actually in 2019, that was done, and that appraisal was sent to iStar for their review. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Seeing no one else to make a motion to shut down public?
Take a motion. All right. Move to close. To close. Second. Second.
Ernest McNally, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Pointon Beach, Florida. So, I'd like to pick up where you left off last week, the last meeting, both having developers, yourselves, everyone attacked me, my family, my life. So, I have some statements to make, okay? Here they are. Operation Bid Rig, we all know, took place here roughly between 2002 and 2012. The city mayor went to prison, the city manager went to prison for five years, the council members went to prison, and then all the lawyers and all the people and developers involved here, for some reason, in Asbury Park, right, seemed to have survived somehow, and the law firms. Now, every time I mention Ansel Grim Aaron here, they're here since, I don't know what, 98, 2000, whatever, your city attorney says, oh, you're getting personal. Let me mention some names. Ansel Grim Aaron, Zaro, Raffredo, Hanaker, and Hazer. Now, Hazer is a retired Superior Court judge. He joined the firm. Hanaker is a former prosecutor. He joined the firm. Zaro is the one that left. He was partners with Solomon Gueck. Solomon Gueck testified under oath that with Zaro and paying money, hundreds, tens of thousands of dollars at the Deal Country Club and the Parkway Bathroom to Terry Weldon, the former police fire chief here, and then city manager, right? So, they all testified against Weldon. Weldon went to prison. Now, why do I say that? Because this law firm continues to say, it wasn't us, nothing ever happened. Last time he said, no official's ever been arrested when I'm here. How about the housing official? Five years. What's his name? Alms? In 2018, Asbury Housing Official. Boosted his pension up to 170, his salary, 175, stole $90,000, and is now in five years in prison. So, you all keep denying everything, and I want to say one thing. I'm going to keep going on everything, and I'm trying to get Operation Bid Rig here, too. Bid Rig Two here because you're very, very disrespectful the way you come after people, and you let developers.
Stop, be polite. Stop it. Stop it. Sir, yes, yes, please, nope. Ernest, you get another 10 seconds. Go ahead.
So, and while I'm working on this, right, the clerk is preventing me from getting orders. You hired about 20 lawyers now to all the lawsuits and all the things going on that you don't want the public to know about. And you know what? I don't care what Chapman says about her husband. She's now a councilwoman. She's now here, living in Asbury, and buying all kinds of stuff from that kind of false business. And I don't agree with it. Thank you for the extra 10 seconds.
Okay, and let me just correct you on a couple of things. So, I could be wrong, but I'm going to go on record. No council member from 2002 to 2012, to the best of my knowledge, ever went to jail. So, you're wrong again. Ansel Grim and Aaron have not been the city attorney since 1990, since you're wrong again. So, you're going to do all this research. Do it damn halfway right, for Christ's sakes. The city attorney has had nothing to do with the Housing Authority investigations whatsoever as per state, federal HUD laws whatsoever. They have their own attorney. Thank you.
Rita, you're up. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Rita Moreno, 504 8th Avenue, Asbury Park. I watched the last planning meeting on the pool, and it was, it was a total disgrace what happened there. We were supposed to be voting on the fence, and we wind up voting on the whole thing, the pool. Isn't that the way it went? John, you were there. And from now on, you really have to have models to show what the building's going to look like. And artist's rendering is coming out to be the biggest nightmare Asbury ever had. Look at the two buildings on Lake Avenue. They're right on the sidewalk. You know there's a setback usually. The planning board has to be advised, or they have to be removed, because they're making plans for us, the people, that we don't agree with. I don't, I know the pool has to be there, because, John, you said that, but it could be a better design. It's really ugly the way it is. And they voted yes on that, when 14 people voted no on the Zoom meeting. And one person, who we don't know who he is, he lives at 1101, he's probably the manager of the building, had voted yes. You've got to do something about this. There's a building on Cookman that looks like they're building the Empire State Building, right on the alley. And two buildings on Main Street, the bar is overwhelming. Where do they park? They let them expand that whole operation. Something's got to be done with the planning and zoning board. They're the ones doing our future. Not for me, but for my children and grandchildren. You must do something. We have to have models. So far, I found out that Connecticut has models. And I'm going to do a little research myself and find out where they have, we used to have models, too. What happened to all that? An artist's rendering is not the answer. Put up the picture for the vibe and tell me if that's the same building that went up. Well, the vibe is a nice building, I know, but look at that picture and tell me if it's that. This planning board has to be, I don't know, maybe take a few more courses. Because the people that are coming in, they're really fooling us. There's an extra floor on Cook, on Main Street. Where are all these people going to park? They have to think about the whole picture, not just one building. And we have to think about our neighbors. Ocean Grove's not too happy with Asbury, I could tell you that, because of Lake Avenue. And now you're going to add more units to it. Where are all these people?
Time's up.
But I like an answer. You like what happened the other night at the planning?
Okay, Rita, Rita, your time's up.
All right, could you answer me?
Yeah, I'm going to answer, I'll answer your last statement first. Asbury Park is not too happy with Ocean Grove still locking the gates at 12 o'clock, so it goes both ways.
Well, there's a reason.
Okay, well, nope. And Rita, you can't, I can't let you speak, I'm sorry. As far as the planning board, I think the planning board is outstanding mixture of very talented people, and as much as I disagreed with them the other night, you disagreed with them the other night, I think they do, the planning board does a very good job. I think if you have complaints about the planning board, they have to be addressed at a planning board meeting, not at a council meeting, because we have no say over them whatsoever, their autonomous agency, with their own lawyer, their own planner, their own representative. So, if you have a complaint about them, you should complain at the planning board meeting. As far as models, we had a conversation earlier tonight where, I call it the Jerry Scratt of the thing. Maybe we should have models, so we're looking into models again. So, I'm not going to promise you that we're going to have it at the next meeting or the next development, but it's something we're looking into, because you're right, we need better sightlines, we need better, like, than just a picture that doesn't necessarily show everything. So, on that, I agree with you, and that's something we're looking into.
I hope so.
Okay, thank you, Rita.
You promised me my street would get paved, but it didn't happen.
Oh, Rita, if it was up to me, you'd be the number one on the list, but people agree to streets, I'm not one of them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. I have a question. Somebody needs to clarify it for me. What is the difference between a quote and a bid? What is the, what are the perimeters or parameters between a quote and a bid? That's it.
That's it? Donna?
I can start it, and Donna can certainly clarify as well, but since the city of Asbury Park has a qualified purchasing agent, our bid threshold is higher than other municipalities that do not have a qualified purchasing agent. And as a result, for expenditures that fall under the threshold amount, we're only required to obtain quotations, and we go with the quote that is most advantageous to the city. If the amount of the goods or services are in excess of our bid threshold... If the amount of the goods or services are in excess of our bid threshold, then we're required to go out for open competitive bids and advertise in the newspaper. So our threshold, I believe, given our QPA is 40,000.
40,000, you're correct.
Anything under that just requires the competitive quotes.
So if someone was to go, so in other words, anybody can walk into an office or a building or whatever and say, just give me a quote and walk away, and that's sufficient for you to turn around, decide whether Office A is going to get it opposed to Office B? Just a quote, a verbal quote? Do you need it in writing? Do you need it in?
We get quotes in writing, and we get at least two quotes for each item that we must quote on.
You get a quote in writing?
Yes.
From the individual?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Louise.
Hi, Sylvia Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber, 1201 Springwood. First, I just want to say how wonderful it is to see everybody in 3D. I also think that every single one of you up there may be the most gracious people that I've met. It's been just 15 months, I think, since the last time we were here, when we made the announcement that there was going to be restrictions because this city was one of, I think, three in the state that had projected a little bit more, with more forethought, what was coming. And I said this before, I think you have, you definitely saved lives by doing that ahead of the state even imposing restrictions. So I thank you for that. And I think your leadership was magnificent. In addition, your staff and Donna, you came in here and blinked, and the next thing you knew, there was a pandemic. You've handled yourself and have been such a pleasure to work with. The PD, the FD, and the DPW have been unbelievable. And I always thought they were wonderful, but I've never seen anything like this. So thank you for all of that. And then I do have one flyer that I would like to read to you on behalf of Joseph Shack now. I think you probably know him better as Shack. He's a chaplain with the PD here. He's worked on a program, a grant, a funding program that he was able to receive a program of free food distribution for Asbury Park. It'll start Sunday, June 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Transportation Center. It'll be rain or shine. It'll be recurring every Sunday with a seven-day menu. They will be distributing to anybody who has children under 18. The program will continue as long as it's needed or it can be funded. There's no cost to anybody. There's no registration or identification required. I have, they just revised their flyer that they had earlier today, just before I got in here. So I'm going to forward this to the council and to Communications Director, if you wouldn't mind sharing this information. And that is, I think, everything I have. It looks like a fantastic program, and the guy's just super committed to helping the community. So I wanted to acknowledge that and also just share this information because he couldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Anyone else like to be heard?
Motion closed.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public portion of the meeting has now been closed. We are on two minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes of May 26th to 4:00 p.m., municipal council regular meeting minutes of the 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on a consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council, be considered routine. These matters, there will be no individual discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On the consent agenda, we have Resolutions 2021-280 to 2021-308. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. Our first individual resolution is 21-298, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it. I have to stop myself from saying Quinn.
I know. I know. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
To Resolution 21-299, a resolution authorizing brake repairs to the 2013 Sea Grave Tower Ladder at, for the fire department.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-300, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2021 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, Click It or Ticket Grant. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-301, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2021 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, Senior Center Grant. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-302, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to general code for the 2021 ordinance codification. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-303, 303, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of gunfire technology with ShotSpotter. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-304, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to the Rogers Group for Police Training. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Quinn, move it.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 21-305, a resolution designating Red Bank to serve as the lead municipal agency as part of the Sustainable Monmouth Alliance Energy Aggregation Program. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-306, a resolution ratifying the appointment of the tax collector for the City of Asbury Park, and that person is Michael Schnorr. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. The first ordinance for introduction is ordinance 21-26, an amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan with a public hearing date of July 7th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to second readings, public hearings. The first ordinance up for a public hearing is ordinance 21-20, which is an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 30 entitled Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Do we want to have a brief overview before we go in?
Please.
All right.
Michelle?
Michelle.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. Tonight you have the second reading for the zoning amendments divided into two sections. And the... Oh, no, we just went past that.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
So, so the first portion, it's divided into two because the first portion is amendments to the general design section to the, to the zoning amendment. I'm going to just wait one sec. That includes us...
Can the public hear?
No.
Is the microphone on? Or is it because I have my mask on?
That's better.
Can you, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I'm going to take my, pull my mask down because also all of a sudden I have some congestion. But so the first portion, so this is a, has been a long process. This is based upon our new master plan that we adopted in 2017. We've been working on these amendments for about two years. This is the first major overhaul to the zoning ordinance in, over a decade. And the first section amends portions of the zoning ordinance that are design-related, such as fences, landscaping, landscaping for parking lots. And the second portion even is, amends the zone districts, regulations, the bulk standards, community development, community design standards, and the zoning map that corresponds with, with the zone amendments. Some, some residents received a notice for amendments to the zoning map because we did alter a boundary line where we included the supermarket on Memorial Avenue. We took it as an industrial district and we put it into a business district because that makes more sense since it is not an industrial use. So that's my, my quick summary. I'll remain here for questions.
Please.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 21-20?
Move to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now open on ordinance 21-20. Any members of the public who wish to be heard, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Hi, Ernest Minoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Pointon Beach, Florida. So I attended most of the meetings as, as the zoning board and the city planner, et cetera, and the whole group was looking to make some changes, like you mentioned, right now, to the master redevelopment plan. And it, it seems like the public didn't have enough, in my opinion, input, especially because since you did that, and when we came to the meetings and you announced it, and everybody said it was great, and you all voted for all the amendments, since that time, there's been major projects that have come before the planning board about the zoning and about the thing signs and landscaping and, and water and water quality, et cetera. And what comes out in every meeting is that, that you didn't, that you didn't modify it and that they could go under the old program. But in the, in the modification that you suggested, you were very, very concerned about landscaping, very concerned about water runoff in zones, very concerned about these things. So that after you put them in, and now you're going to vote on them and probably finally approve them, that's all well and good. But how about all these meetings that have been going on all along where people are clearly ignoring what you're going to vote now on and because their lawyers said at the meeting, well, they haven't really finally approved it yet. So everybody went to get all their approvals before the update to the water quality, before all the things. And here we are now, they're all approved, and now you're going to vote for a final approval. So I, to me, I just think it was, the planning board attorney should have picked up on that. The zoning board attorney should have picked up on it. The city attorney should have picked up on it, that all these applications, knowing what was imminent, that you worked on for years to finally update this, finally, is, was coming. Now it comes. Here I stand, and in the last three, four months, you've approved things that, that are in such violation of what you're now going to approve, that I think somebody should have told them with their applications, we're, we're near approving these modifications. So you're going to have to wait for a final approval. But no, they gave them all the final approvals. Now, you know, especially things like water quality and water runoff, you know, you, you took the new improved standards by the government to the master redevelopment plan, and you made them even more strict, which I think was one of the best things you ever did. But what you allowed was about 10 developers to come in and get all kinds of projects recently approved that are not going to be anywhere near this. So look, it, it's like, Mr. Lanza, what you worked on, everybody knows, like the developers know, the lawyers know, they know what stage you're in. So then you don't know when to come in and get a quick application because they know that you didn't get the council to actually vote on it right now, and it's not really official until they vote on it. Even though the planning board and all the boards, all the work in to update it, to make it much better for Asbury, but look at what's been approved in the last six months, and now you're going to approve it permanently. So I don't agree with that. And thank you for the time.
Thank you.
One of the things is the pool. They're going to let the water out on the street.
It has nothing to do with this ordinance, does it?
This, it doesn't have anything to do with it?
No, no, this, this is signs.
Right, so that's the redevelopment area. So also, I think there was some confusion. This council passed a new stormwater ordinance in, in April, and that, that was great. That was an upgrade to water, water management. So that was already passed. These are amendments to other sections of the zoning ordinance. For this first, the first part is design standards, like John said, signs, fences, landscaping, landscaping in parking lots.
Yeah. It doesn't refer to everything all over town? It's just a certain section?
All, all over town, but just for those substances she, she just mentioned, signs, the landscaping, that's it, as far as this ordinance. The second ordinance may have something to do with what you're talking about. I don't think so, but...
Right. Right. So, not, so if it's a redevelopment area with its own standards, this amendment does not affect it. Some of our redevelopment plans refer back to the zoning ordinance, some do not. The waterfront redevelopment plan has its own set of standards and does not refer back to the zoning ordinance. This is amendments to the zoning ordinance based upon recommendations of the 2017 master plan.
There's a lot of the members in it. You're changing a lot of things that will ruin the plan.
We updated a lot of things. The planning board, the council sent it to the planning board. A lot of things were updated. I don't know if the right word is changed, but they were updated. And there's a public hearing at the planning board. People gave testimony. People asked questions and input was taken from by the public and things were changed because of public input, especially about shrubs and trees along, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna think of One Bridge Avenue and other places as far as blocking, you know, visual, where people could no longer see the lake. So, some things have been changed, but again, this has more to do with, again, street tree planting, signs and that. That's all, that's all this one has to do with.
I would say, like you said, John, this is an updating. And again, we haven't had, looked comprehensively at a lot of these standards in over decades. And this is based upon the master plan recommendations. And John is correct. We had, we, we had public input at the planning board. I had announced at a few council, I, I did a presentation at council about a month and a half ago. I have on the, had on the website an email address for people to give comments. And this was, it was on the web, it was on the website. It was in social media blasts. And again, we've been working on the, these amendments for two years. And they, again, they're, they're an updating, especially the sign, the sign ordinance. We updated a lot of things in the sign ordinance that legally needed updating.
I know, but the land of the sign ordinance isn't as important as the land use.
The land use is part two. Land, this is the comments on the part one, which is more as the design aspects.
She's studying, but yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Not seeing any other members.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 21-20. Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 21-20?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The second ordinance up for a public hearing is Ordinance 21-21, and that's an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 30 entitled Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, and amending the official zoning map. Michelle, do you want to give a brief overview?
Yeah, so this is the part two. This amends the...
Take, take the mail, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is the part two. This amends the individual, regulations and uses for the individual zone. The R1, the R, the R2, the B District, the light industrial district. And we, again, based on recommendations of the master plan, we, we examined bulk requirements and we've amended them to finally include a impervious coverage requirement. We looked, we, we amended the building coverage requirement. We removed the FAR requirement. These were all recommendations not of, only of this last master plan, but the previous master plan. So, we finally are putting these into motion. We also amended the definition section to bring it into the 21st century so that we have some definitions that include microbrewery and some uses that were neglected in the older ordinance. We also made amendments to the section called Community Design Standards, again, making them clearer and bringing them into the 21st century. And we also amended conditional uses, which was the section that needed the, the biggest upgrade because, again, we, we eliminated uses that are no longer prevalent in the city and we added uses were mostly retain, pertaining to the service sector in there. And then the amendments to the zoning map reflect the, the new, the, the, the changes for some of the zones and reflects, as I said, some people got noticed because we moved a boundary line, taking the Supermarket and Memorial out of the industrial zone and into the B zone. And that required by state law requires a notice requirement of everyone within 200 feet.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 21-21?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now open on Ordinance 21-21. Any members of the public who wish to be heard, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Ernest Minoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. So, I think you mentioned, if I'm correct, about impervious surface?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that would, that also includes the modifications to the modifications that the state has done in terms of water movement, water quality, impervious, water runoff, et cetera. In other words, you did a great job. When, when we listened to you making those modifications, if I'm not correct, or correct me if I'm wrong, you actually made much more strict for Asbury what the state did in the revision of the, of the DEP and the cap. Am I correct? Didn't you make it more strict?
But that's not this ordinance. That's the ordinance already adopted by council.
But isn't this the one about impervious purpose? Who you said that?
That is one element. So, but that is not what we're, the stormwater regs. So, this is just one change. So, in one way, you're correct. Most towns have what's called lot coverage, impervious coverage requirement, a maximum. Basically, so you don't pave your whole backyard. Up into, we do not have a maximum impervious coverage requirement in the city for one family develop, one family lots. This gives us a coverage requirement so a whole backyard can't be paved.
I was at all the meetings. There's a lot more to it. You talked, you talked about multiple families. You talked about big projects. You talked about something like the Triangle Project on, on Cookman Avenue. You, 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 you made it important to, especially for all the bigger things. And then in addition to that, you said, or because public commented, well, what if they don't follow it? And you said, well, we should come up with more fines, maybe a thousand a day, maybe a thousand a week, whatever. So, you really did a good job. And here's what...
Fred, Fred, can we just make sure, is this, what is the question, Mr. Minoli? I'm, I'm unclear on that.
I believe as, as Ms. Alonso indicated, that you're confusing the ordinances. The ordinance that you're referring to is the stormwater management ordinance that Ms. Alonso indicated the city has already adopted in April.
Okay. Well, thank you for saying that.
But can you please stick your comments to the ordinance that's on the table right now?
Has to do with water runoff? And that's what I mean. Why would a city attorney who's not an engineer not understand that impervious service affects water runoff?
A question. A question, please.
Ms. Alonso?
Yeah.
Does impervious, what, what you modified, does that affect water runoff?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I'm saying. So, now, now I come to the meetings for the past six months or a year and developers and the lawyers are coming with their applications. And when, and the public portion, when I say, wait a minute, the city adopted a much more stringent about impervious because it causes water runoff, et cetera, et cetera. And then the lawyers were saying, between the board lawyers and the, and the developer lawyers, they're saying, oh, no, no, no. That's not what Ms. Alonso passed. It's got nothing to do with that. So, I said, well, wait a minute. That's not true. So, what do they say? You're muted. They go ahead and vote. And now we have all these projects with 95% impervious because they didn't follow what you and, and the council did a great job on. You really realize how important it is that you shouldn't have a piece of property for a big developer with, with 200 units and they're covering 98% of the property.
Mr. Minoli, they couldn't stop something that hasn't been passed yet. We haven't passed this ordinance. That's what we're here to do tonight.
I'm aware of that. But, but what, what, my question is this. Why do all the developers and their lawyers always know exactly what you're working on? And that's when they rush in with applications to be ahead of tonight? Because in the last three months, some things that this would tremendously affect, probably cause them to be turned down. So, my question is, why are they getting all that information? I mean, you have brilliant developer lawyers here. They're getting insight with the city's working on.
Mr. Minoli?
Am I right or wrong? That's my question.
You're, you're not asking questions about the ordinance.
I'm asking about the impervious. Is it right or wrong?
Is impervious, is, is impervious mentioned in this ordinance? Absolutely. There's a definition now of impervious in this ordinance.
My question is, as far as, as far as... Lawyers or the developers know as much as you all and your lawyers. Why is that?
You're, I'm gonna cut you off completely because, wait a second, if, I'm gonna give you another chance.
Okay.
You're, you're kinda mishmashing everything. No developer, no lawyer, no anybody goes into planning or zoning and says, here, put this on the agenda for next week. Right now, I know, I can't talk for zoning. I can talk for planning board. We have four meetings coming up with two special meetings and we still have projects that aren't even on yet. These projects that are on, scheduled in June and July, were put in months ago, were queued up so far behind that we're having special meetings. So, as far as like accusation or innuendo that, you know, developers are smarter than us and just going in there and trying to beat us to the gun, I, I think you're wrong. You can have your opinion, but again...
That's all. I, I was asking, my opinion, I said, is your opinion different? So, what you're saying is, you don't think that developers' lawyers...
No, but again...
And they're in all the offices here and they're talking to Ms. Alonso.
No, no, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you...
You're not getting any insight. Maybe we should do this pretty quick.
I'm gonna ask you one more time. Do you have a question about tonight's...
Well, that is my question. You don't think that the developers' lawyers know too much about what you want?
Question asked, question answered. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
The reason the public knows about what the council and the planning board are working on is because of the Open Public Meetings Act and the requirement that the, the public bodies of the city must take action in public.
Move to close.
Why do you always answer the call?
Second.
Because he's the attorney.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 21-21.
Thank you, Michelle.
Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 21-21?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you, Michelle.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Welcome back, everybody. Thank you.